This conference will now be recorded.
Well, there you go. You know, every month, a year, it's usually.
We don't like this a little bit. Let's keep on somebody. Super tight right there above the. Who's that? Is that my husband, right? Okay.
But yeah, right there.
We were.
Just in your.
Yeah, I'm so important. They were open.
That's good.
He's all like that. And I'm like.
So make sure you drink that.
I hear.
Yeah.
I need my baby.
So we're all testing. Hey, don't we need to turn?
Yeah, kind of. It's like, like when you're a little kid. Bring that up. Yeah. He's all about the beer. You got the whole. You're like.
I'm getting more comments. Get mine.
This is a hundred million dollars. We must have been electrified. Oh, no, look, we don't want to hear that. It was not. She's thinking he's a very.
There's.
Now you're just a carrier.
You want to mend that? They're full.
Just say the thing without.
Say the thing.
Say the thing. Say the thing without asking.
I was wondering, I was sitting here like. No, it's just. It's great.
I was just. So.
You get a bigger hat or just get your. I like the accent, too. You know, my daughter really doesn't swear. Oh. Try to. Or he might. She's like what. Doesn't have rest. So what they related to.
I mean, you just say it's me.
Before you hear that, Brandon. Uh. When you go up to New York. Yeah. Ah, you don't. Fucking size.
Right. So this is nothing.
We see the two. The word place they told them.
There are. There are.
That's right.
I'm pushing it.
I'll do that. When did they?
I thought you were. It's been. Please.
Other than. Hey, you got your name.
That's. My. Very.
They. They really. Brain this.
It's.
Right?
Yes. Yes. But then. You see. Of course. For. Yeah. For. I don't know. I was trying to.
I don't know.
So she. That's. It's. Yeah, that's. What? Yeah. Yes.
I know. That's pretty. Imagine.
That was.
I think it's. I'm gonna do. So that's. And.
Yeah.
He said what? Oh, he did. He's still these hours six weeks.
We just said. So. Like. So he would wait for.
How was his search?
What? I'm.
Yeah. All right.
That's my six.
What?
For. Yeah.
You know what Scotty said? I made for breakfast saying that. Representatives themselves.
Yeah. I didn't have breakfast.
Well, I didn't eat anything.
I was.
It's been a long day. That'd be. Somewhere along. Exactly. Me cutting that. I want some kind of real food. Do it like. All right, ready? Yep. All right. I found this to be particular meaning of the city. And roll call please.
Mayor Roberts.
I am here.
Mr. Trujillo.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Bo. Please.
I asked Pastor Dave Rousher of Jackson Avenue Baptist Church to lead us into our vacation.
Thank you. Will you all pray with me? Of your kind and present heavenly Father, we come before you now seeking your wisdom, your guidance, your presence, and your power in this meeting. I pray for wisdom and guidance for each of those that are having to make decisions and for all that are present. I ask that you would give us insight and knowledge so that we might more accurately do your business because in trying to please you, we'll take care of everyone else. I thank you for this opportunity to pray. I thank you for each and every person here, and I pray blessings on each and everyone. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We're going to use this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico to see a symbol of our friendship among the united cultures.
Maybe see. I think I've been around. Thank you, Mr. Bo. After speaking.
Thank you very much, Pastor Rousher, for what you do for a community with your church.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. It's very lucky, Mr. Bo, that I feel insignificant now, and I wish to bring a higher than next time.
Okay.
He's never here.
Well. He better be fully ready because he got, he got these shoes.
Yeah, you got to.
Shoot the back.
That being said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with only one amendment, and that is to resolution 2023 that zero, zero, two. Approval. Zero, two, two. What did I say?
Zero, zero.
Oh, sorry. Zero, two, two. Approval of Mills in Lake project submission for fiscal year 2024 cooperative program and project fund support.
Second. We have a motion in a second to amend. Are you going to approve the agenda as amended? Any discussion? If not, Shannon.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. White. Yes. Mr. Trujillo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to the considerations of minute, of minutes, February 13th, 2023. Okay. We have a motion in a second to adopt the minutes of February 13th. Any discussion? If not, Shannon.
Mr. Trujillo.
Yes.
Mr. White. Yes. Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. All right, brings us to Mr. Shannon. Shannon, do you have anything to do?
Mayor and Commissioners, I spoke with Albert Victoria today. He's the project. He's not really the project manager, but he's. He's lost contact with the roofs, roof care, and he said that they are almost complete with the senior citizen center. And they've been delayed to have the ball ran. They can't be on the roof, so it's real windy like that. So they're getting real close. That's all I had to know.
Any questions, Ms. Shannon? Seeing that, Ms. Espinoza?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know that the DFA report was submitted, and we did get a memo that the entry budget is due June first. So we're really gonna try to get all that, you know, make sure and get all that done by June first. It's been submitted to DFA. That's all I had, just adjusting.
Any questions, Ms. Chris? Oh, we're moving right along now. Gee, brings it to you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, with the striking of our parking lot and installation of bumpers, our $65,000 capital, Alley Fence and Parking Lot Project for the Police Department has finally finished. The process took 15 months, but we are very happy with the results. I have been working with the New Mexico Municipal League of Attorneys to help us review and revise our agency's policies and procedures, which they will do for us at no cost. Our policies and procedures have not been updated since 2017, and obviously, much has changed and long unfortunate since that time. That's all I have. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
The law group or who's this?
The Municipal League.
Okay, okay.
On the conference.
Nope, that's all. Thank you.
All right, we are trucking right along. Party.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, so we're doing a new hire testing this coming Saturday. We have two applicants that are supposed to be attending, and we have one position still to fill. Just like police department, we actually are currently in the process of updating our department policies. They've not been revised or updated since 2014, and they need to be updated. We are in the process right now of replacing all of our old fluorescent lights in our side of the building with LED lights. There, we're paying $60 a light, which there are these big lights like this. They only cost a third of the energy that these fluorescent lights use. So hopefully, that will save on our electric bill in the long run. You know, we're paying a little bit upfront, about $3,000 for all the lighting, but that's for the whole building. We're currently in the process of setting up a career day at the high school. Right now, we're scheduled for April 11th. We were scheduled for the 18th, but the school had to reschedule. So it's not gonna be April 11th. We're gonna start at 8:30 a.m. and go till noon. This is gonna be in the football field parking lot. We're gonna do like a little mock combat challenge for the kids. We're gonna have the ladder truck out there. We're gonna do vehicle education and some EMS stuff. We're hoping this will help with recruiting. And, you know, it's good for the kids, gives them a, and not just them, but the public a chance to kind of see what we do. And right now, we're working with the administration on like the permission slip slash waiver liability form. And I sent them our waiver liability that we use with the city, and they're gonna try to get something together with our form and their form. And then when they get that, I will also get that with Patrick and to make sure that he is good with it and it's good for the city. So I am working on that right now.
And my last fireworks. So I know everybody read the paper.
What did it say? No, I didn't say.
Oh, well, it's, yeah. So good news. I, after working and working and working, and calling different people, everybody was like, oh, we're not, we're not licensed in the state of Mexico. We can't do it in the state of New Mexico. So I was like, you know what? I'm gonna call the state of New Mexico. I'm gonna call Fire Marshal's Office. Ask them for a list of pyrotechnicians, licensed pyrotechnicians in the state. There is none.
There isn't.
They do not, uh, they have nothing to do with that. They said there's, you can bring in whoever you want. Any city has their choice of who they want to bring in. They said all we have anything over is the cell of fireworks. So I got with Mr. W's or Brad Friesen at Mr. W Fireworks. They said they'd love to do the fireworks show for us. So what, the way it works is the city will order the fireworks as normal like we do because they are not able to order. We go all the way up to six inch artillery shells. They're not able to order the fireworks, so we will order them. Instead of them being stored in our old leaky building across the street, they're gonna store them in their fireworks building right here, the bunker by the post office. And then we use our tubes and our electronic boxes. One of my guys, when they go to set the fireworks up, will be there to give them pointers of this is how we do it. This is how we set it up, and this is how you set up into electronic boxes so that they learn as well. They're charged $2,500. And so total, unless fireworks have just skyrocketed, we should be right at that $10,000 mark. And all I ask is if Mr. McMahon can draw up a contract between the city and Mr. Friesen that states everything, you know, and is good with the city. So that way, we can still have our fireworks show where it takes it out of the fire departments.
Liability.
Liability, you know, my. Good job. This took a lot of, a lot of phone calls. To establish that there is a. Yes, and I was surprised that the city does not have, or the state does not have any control over that. So that is all I have. I will thank you. Any questions? The only question that I have is in allowing them to be the ones to set them up, probably need to get with the insurance company and make sure that they have the liability. God forbid one falls over and shoots somebody in the crowd or whatever.
Well, and that's, I actually was on the phone with him probably for an hour and a half this afternoon, just before I came up here. And that was some stuff we were discussing. And that's why I also wanted to get with Mr. McMahon on the contract and that stuff.
Perfect. And we're ahead of the game, so. Not too fragile. Try exactly. All right, thanks. Mr. Bo.
Yeah, I got a couple things tonight. I'll start off with shop local, beautiful, buy local. I always say it, Scotty.
How can I do that?
Well, there are plenty of ways. There are plenty of ways. Help me out. Tell me, too. Our restaurants, our stores, how does that work? Go from seat on.
I just be eager to know.
It's in your head.
But no, no.
I appreciate. I know.
But as I said, every hour that we spend to help out our vocal go towards our GRT and help out our community. Appreciate that again. Thank you very much. I wasn't here this past weekend. We had a banquet the other night. I'd like to congratulate and I don't want to say her name wrong, but I'll try it. Susanna.
Arviza.
Arviza. Choose the Business of the Year from State Farm. Congratulations. And Kenny Ken will Citizen of the Year. We appreciate everything that they do for us, for the city. Set a good example for everybody. Just wanted to say thank you again. I wasn't able to participate. Had family come in, so we weren't here. And also, three things I wanted to bring up to Commissioners, City Manager, and any other departments that this pertains to. I really don't want to get into a lengthy discussion because we've got a lot of items tonight. But it's something I want to bring up that I want to know where we're at as far as where we're going with the vision. Something to look forward to. Three good things I know one will be about Troy Harris. And find out what we're gonna do on that. If we're moving forward, what's going on? Some ideas, what our options are. And I said, I'll say it again, I don't want to get into the discussion tonight. Commissioners, I want to get with the City Manager, any other department heads need to get in on it. Second thing is the E-zone. I'd like to find out what we're doing on the E-zone. We're fixing things up around our community. We're going around with Operation Cleanup. They law that greatly. Doing a good job. The E-zone, we're gonna be fixing our streets up, getting things going in the right direction. We still have a bunch of buildings that are boarded up. I went in the fronts and I really haven't seen us too much on it. We enacted this in May of 19. And a lot of the buildings I still see, I understand. We've had a bunch of changes in our city departments. So I can understand, but I want to get a vision. I want to move forward. So there's a lot of things that we're moving forward on. I want to do that also. Trying to help out the neighborhoods, everything else. And the other one I have is the building on Washington and the alley. Building that's pretty much condemned. I don't know if it is or not. Which one? This is on Washington.
Central. Oh.
Central.
Central by the alley is the one you're talking about?
Yes.
On Central, just between.
Deal with. Right, right. That was something that we were working on, trying to get taken care of, and I know we were adding issues before with Laura and Crystal. You guys know all about it. I thought that was issued on resolve. We still have to move forward now, which is why I feel that it's a safety hazard.
I know. Have you took care of with Max, the attorney from Hobbs? Is that on Central, just the rest of behind the bank?
Yes, behind the bank.
Okay, so we did get the attorney for the estate of the owner to sign off on it for Operation Cleanup. However, I think the cost of repairs, because there's asbestos still there, is gonna be over $25,000. So last night, her mom was looking for four to.
Yeah, she didn't have that much.
Right. So for the micro distillery.
For the demo of the building in particular, we lost those funds because it had to be used by January of this year. And so we lost those. That's specifically for the building itself for the, you know, so I don't have those funds anymore.
I'd like to see what we got. Somehow.
I'm trying, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, I'm open to any suggestions. I know right now we cannot use Operation Cleanup for that specific building, correct?
As of today, we are, we are Operation Cleanup because we haven't gotten the $50,000 from the county yet. We're at zero. We spent the $76,000 from the auction.
But it's my understanding, since that building is not. Crime.
It's not, you cannot just. Five hundred.
Clean up.
Oh, whether it be a safety issue.
Yeah.
It's boarded up. It's.
You know, another thing, Mr. Bo can request it to be on the budget for next year and see what it's gonna cost us in that, that to the budget, general budget. Something you can add. I think something we can add to our budget for next year. I think that just.
Yeah. Yeah, because I just feel that we've been at this trying to get this rectify for quite some time.
Yeah, I think there are two, two issues with that piece of property that makes it different than some of the others that we've worked at. The first issue is that I think it was an oil company entity that owned it. And at the time, they were obligated to plug some wells in New Mexico, and they decided to leave the state of New Mexico and let OCD come take their bond to do the plugging. So the chances of tracking them down and actually talking to them, getting them back to New Mexico to deal with that issue with this piece of property is probably slim to not. And we've not dealt with that issue before. The other thing is that in addition to them, that company or that owner leaving the state, there are also some tax lien on that that raised some different issues too. So I think we did not want to be in the position of demolishing the property, cleaning it up and making it valuable, and then having one of the entities that has a tax lien just foreclose that lien. They may do something with it that's constructive, so to speak, as opposed to a abandoned building. But that particular property presents a number of issues with, with the tax liens and the fact that the owner is out of state and probably not ever going to come back to deal with it. So it's not even, it's not like some of these other properties where we've got an owner that we could contact. The owner that was in Oklahoma on the other piece of property or, you know, tax liens, that throws a huge mess. If the city is willing, and I think if you put it in the budget, you could certainly go in and clean it up. But I think that anticipating the city could do something constructive with it is probably low on success scale.
But if it's not classified as a criminal activity, there's that anti-donation issue.
Well, we could, if it's not criminal, there's a certain issue we could deal with there. If it's, you know, if, if somebody came in and said, hey, well, it could fall down, there's a health and safety issue, we could pursue it that way. I just want to make sure that some of the other properties, you know, ended up seeing a better result when we were done. I can't say that for this one because of tax liens and some of the other things.
Right, and I understand with the locations and that. And I'm not looking for someone person to benefit from it. I'm not looking for the community to benefit by not being there.
If the city is willing to spend the money as far as, and if we can get somebody to look at it that, that will say, hey, it's, it's a health and safety risk, we've got the ability to move in that direction too. You're probably not gonna see any kind of benefit out of it like we did with these other problems.
Right, right.
I know, and all the documentation on the bedling, we do have from the state inspector where it is unstable, unsafe.
Okay, if we have that.
We have that.
Yeah, we could move in that direction.
We've had that.
If you.
We've had that for a couple of years.
Right.
Brian Houston did sign off on it, allowing us to. It's just not, we've never had any criminal activity there. That's the issue. Bada, hold on, Ms. Deanna. Bada, I know you know a lot about this because we've had a lot of discussions. Why don't you kind of bring?
Yes.
Come on up.
Mayor and Commissioners, if I may, there is a state statute that allows you to condemn the property. You would be able to place a lien and then be able to do internet domain on it. That would follow the anti-donation clause and would allow the city to recreate their losses. We have spoken about this property for a long time. It's actually Laura who's been working on it. She has brought before, I think, a couple of times the condemnation process for that property as well. I do know it's a little bit pricier and it keeps getting pricier. However, there are plenty of property owners that can come before City Commission and discuss how that property is causing damage to their property and how it's an issue for them as well. Regardless of whether it goes through E-zone or not, there is that statute that allows you to do that. It does take a while, and it is a two-year turnaround, but it would at least scare us going in the right direction for it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kimber.
You know, that building is right down from mine. And to say there is not criminal activity, and Commissioner Boalton, thank you for bringing this back up again because I've been fighting that building from years. We had kids in and out of there all the time, you know, and it gets boarded up and then the boards get taken down. And I called James Williams a year ago about it and told him, you're gonna find kids dead in there all these days because that roof is gonna fall in. So to say that there hasn't been criminal activity is not true.
The last time I went, the last time I went past it, I see the boards down in the alley.
Yep.
And if I said, I gotta bring it up and say something.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it up because that happens all the time. And I have driven down there and bricks fall and just barely, because I go down that alley every day to work. And you've got bricks falling and everything else. But to say there hasn't been criminal activity is wrong. There is criminal activity.
None that I can prove.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have. Yeah. Cover.
Well, so next time I see the boards down, I'm gonna call you because I'm telling you, it gets, there's kids in and out of there all the time, and it's scary for me. For, I mean, it should be for everybody in the community because that thing will collapse in a minute. So, you know, the criminal activity part is, you know, kids in and out of it, to me, is criminal activity. So, you know, the criminal activity part is, you know, kids in and out of it, to me is criminal activity. When you see bicycles out there, so it's either the homeless or the kids one. Thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Bo.
I'll bring that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know there are things that we talk about and it kind of gets lost. So I'm glad that you re, bring these back into life.
Yes, and I'd like to get input also and get a vision and see where we're moving. I mean, what we're doing around the neighborhoods and that is great, you know, we're doing different things. We're working on our infrastructure, our waters and everything else. But we need to put a plan together that we're going to bring everything together. That's what I'm asking that we do, so that we know we're moving in the right direction while we're doing it. Mayor Kier.
The only thing I want to bring up was since summer is just around the corner and I know everybody's in that, start asking about the splash pad and the pools. I think we just need to put it up on the agenda, the next, this next agenda for discussion. Are we going to go redo the pool or are we going to go to splash pad? And I just wanted to make a quick comment on that is that Hobbs did away with one of their pools. Lovett did away with all their pools. So I think there's a reason behind it and its cost. And I know that that's always been an issue with us. So something to think about is that maybe we just ought to look at splash pads because if the bigger cities with all their resources can't afford it, what makes you think this little 12,000 population town can afford it? So just something to think about, but I'd like to see it on there. As a discussion, I don't want to, because they're going to ask. And that way we have an answer before they start asking.
Mr. Members of the Commission, I did speak to Bernardo and I communicated. And I know about this at a, I think, previous, previous commission meeting. A company out of Albuquerque will visit us now this month in March to look at the splash pad. Issue that we're running into, it's an old system. So I don't know the exact cost, but that's the first step to have somebody come and look at it. I did tell Bernardo, maybe the best thing to do is upgrade the whole system, start all over. But let's see what, when they show up, what they say, and we'll go from there.
We talked about it in Parks and Recreation too. And Bernardo said on the pool, if they hadn't started on it this January, they wouldn't even be able to talk to us this year. And it was up to, I think, 100, 600,000 or something in damage when they went through and trashed all that electricals last time. And I asked the guys to get quotes on like three more splash pads at some of the little smaller parks. So they haven't gone back with me on that yet. Maybe they'll have it for that next meeting.
Now, as for the pool, I hear rumors that it was built on an old, old landfill dump. It was built on top of a dump. And so the pool, so the, the pool is, it shifted. So I don't, I don't know, I would have to talk to an engineer to see what we need to do if we're going to remodel the pool to make sure it does not shift again. But Commissioner White is correct, it's going to cost between 600,000, almost $1 million to just repair what we have. But my concern is since the foundation is unstable, if we invest that kind of money, are we going to have that down the, down the road a year or two?
Yeah, because the slide is already cracked as well because it's not stable. Yeah, but I'll make sure. I just want to have an answer.
We put that on the agenda. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Ms. White.
The senior board meeting that was canceled in February will be March 9th at 2:00 at the Senior Center. That's all.
Commissioner again.
We get across on the demo for the pool also, that we're looking at it? And there's a street light over there by Taylor School. Only an 80 mile an hour winds doesn't move, you know, 18 inches or so swinging back and forth. It's, it's not the real cord and I don't figure it's going to go down. It didn't go down the last three winds, so we probably got two or three more.
It's a willow tree.
Yeah, pole number. Uh, I do not. It's one of, it's one of the metal ones. It's on the 11th Street at the far end of the parking lot, right there by the alleyway. It's, I think, right there to alleyway, right there on the corner of the alleyway and 11th Street. Yeah, one of these places when you get some time, do some rest. Yeah, you know, it's, it just, somebody needs to look at it, so. Other than that, I don't have any.
I'm sure that was the only one that got locked in. That's basically it. Let's get where a few probably.
Yeah, this one's been doing this for about a day or two. Not a big, the other than that, no, I'm good.
Daley.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, I talked to Commissioner Trico about putting the consideration for the election ordinance notice. So we'll have that on the next meeting to start thinking about where we're leaning at. We'll just have it for approval to advertise it at the beginning. And then it does need to be approved by June 30th.
Do we need, do we, in addition to discussion, do we want to have maybe a ordinance, a?
She wants to approve it. Yeah, we have to do.
I know, yeah. Then let's go ahead and put it on there as an action item to approve that.
To advertise it.
Yes, absolutely. Anything further? Question? City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, I have a couple of things. Recently, I hired Leo Wilson to work part-time at the wastewater plant. He's a level four operator. So he will start next week. He'll be working on Mondays and Wednesdays and on call on Fridays. Mr. Mayor, we will, we will have a meeting Monday at 10 o'clock if you can attend. And we will have Art Torres, Ron Woods, Jerry Bryan, we'll have the crew here. And we will have a discussion on how Leo is going to fit in the big picture. As you are aware, we do need a level four operator, so this is a big plus for us. He's going to start part-time and then we'll move from there. He has a lot of knowledge, he's worked with the city before. And by having Leo Wilson and also Arthur Torres, I think that's a big plus for us. They, they will bring additional knowledge and expertise to the wastewater plant. We'll move forward.
Now, what time, I'm sorry?
10 o'clock on Monday, in here, here in the gym. Today, we met with a, with an engineer on our baseball softball fields. Now, we're running into a problem at the baseball field. We've had some bad winds and we had one light pole crash to the ground. I think it broke part of the fence of the baseball field. Some of those poles are just, every time it's windy, they're just moving back and forth. And so in the discussion today, we did ask the engineer to give us a quote on what will the cost be to replace all our lights at the baseball softball field. We're going to replace the two LED lights and if we can replace the poles to steel beams. So let's see what kind of quote they give us. We have to hire a lighting coordinator, Commissioner White.
We have actually the lighting engineer that's going to lay out the plan to give to the electric company. Well, to tell us how much.
Correct. And so right now.
The, the poles, I believe, and the lights at the baseball field are the city.
Yes.
Yes. So we said the electric company.
Well.
Or the people that are going to be doing the work.
Yeah.
Okay. The contractor. Yes, okay. So just wanted to make sure.
So we, we have a, we have 100,000 from the Maddox Foundation. We have 150,000 from the county and 100,000 from the county of the electric. So that's a good start. That's a total of about 350,000. But it just all depends on the quote they give us. We will just go from there, but once we get the quote, we'll move forward. But we did lose one light. It fell the other day and we just definitely need to replace. I don't know how long it's going to take to, to replace all the lights, the poles. It, it could conflict with our baseball softball season, but it has to get done. And I know there's a safety issue, so once I get that quote, we'll move on it and I'll inform the board of, for right now, we'll move from there. Okay. The other, I have discussion on Quality of New Mexico and the grant right. With that said, I stand for any questions that the Mayor and Commissioner have.
Commissioner.
Just like the apology on the wastewater treatment plant, getting that action plan together. I think that's.
Absolutely confirmed.
So it's a first, makes me feel better.
Thank you, Susan. Ms. Ball.
Hey, I'm passing around a, a rendering of what the neon company come and tested on the tubes of the Marquette Theater. And that is the rendering of the original colors it was. So that is what we're going to attempt to make it look like. It ended up being green, pink and white.
Sounds right.
The NMBOT project, they're looking commercial. They're expecting, whether permitting, to open at the end of March, first of April. They do have the grading crew coming in next week to start on that subface base and get that pavement so we can open commercial back up as soon as possible. The Magic Building, they are still waiting on a few of the punchless items to be finished. Some of the stuff they had to order, now they're waiting for it to come in. Also, the AOC had some additional furniture coming in that hasn't made it in yet. They're looking at opening in April, probably not the first of it, probably about the middle of April.
Are we going to have kind of a ceremony?
Yes, we will have a grand opening, yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
We're hoping about the middle of April. We're hoping about the middle of April to have a grand opening. Soon as AOC gives us, okay, that they got all their furniture in here. Because they don't want to do it till they get all their furniture in there.
Questions?
Stand by.
No. Everybody's doing a great job. Councilor, how are you doing?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't have anything to do. I have to stand by questions.
I do nothing. The only thing that I want to say, and thank you, Councilor. This evening is that I did attend the Chamber Commerce Bank the other night. I would like to say that I've been to several over the past multiple years and the attendance was outstanding, probably the most that I've ever seen there. And ladies and gentlemen, did a great job. We appreciate it and I thought you really put on a really good night. So the place looks phenomenal and everybody looked really good, so just want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us, there you go. Brings us to our public comment time. All we ask is to come forward, state your name, come to the podium and give us what you think in about three minutes or less. Kind of a sparse crowd tonight, but anybody would like to come forward. Now it's time. Yes, sir, Ms. Kimber.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for coming for you. Just want to mention, I think I said about six months ago, we talked about a couple of safety issues, various safety issues. And I had one with a railroad track and I commend the greatest layer of responsible, I think I was myself, audience of wonderful here. Got it corrected. Another thing I brought up was behind 119 Main Street, there's a water meter, maybe two water meters, where the thing was broken and it's a hole about like this. And anyone can step in there and it's, I see that as liability, so. You know, bring that last time when I said to go, I did mention to the water department themselves and it's still not corrected. So there's a concern, it's great, the liability that could lead, you know, for the city itself. With that, I think for you.
119.
119 North Main behind.
Got it.
In, in the Indian.
I didn't mean with the water department, but I'll get your call tomorrow and I'll make sure the guys go log in.
Perfect.
Because they told me they went out there, maybe they went to the wrong, I don't, but we'll take it.
And I think somebody, I seen an origin light barrier can hold, so that's kind of protecting. So that, that might stand out, but.
If you can give me your phone number and then tomorrow I'll call you and we'll, we'll take care of that.
Wait a minute.
Anyone else? The other half? The better half?
I'm the Spanish director of the chamber, Livingston Chamber. At this time, President Munoz and the treasurer, Dan Kimber, would like to present this to the city. I will read it. It looks like you're shy today. This is to the City of Lovington Street Department. An appreciation for your support for the 2022 Fourth of July party in the park. We really appreciate everything the City of Lovington did for Fourth of July. All right, all thank you so much for, they were our manpower at this event. We just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully y'all can pack us up this year.
Absolutely. We will definitely be ready again. It was a great event for the community and you just let us know when you're ready to have those meetings. And like I told you before, we keep making it better.
Yes, thank you so much. My daughter was so much help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, she's already given the Parks and Recreation House there. She thinks we're.
Right. Parks and Rec, this for the rest of the City Police Department. I know that M Road, yeah, Streets, anyway, all was presented the other night. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, bring us to non-action items. I believe this is City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, I, I sent out an email the other day on Quality to Mexico. I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it. There's a form going around. Now, I had the opportunity to work with Quality to Mexico. It's been a long time, probably about 15 years ago. Through college, I worked with, at Clovis Community College and also at Toledo Community College. And we were going to start it at Seminole County. Now, Quality to Mexico is a nonprofit organization. And basically what they do is they help organizations. And I know the mayor is familiar with this, with Quality to Mexico. They help governments, small businesses, nonprofits, education, healthcare and businesses. And basically what they do is they will help us to basically improve. What can we do to make it better? I know Commissioner Bo brought up a plan. We need to have a plan. And this is a perfect opportunity because in this, if we decide to move forward with Quality to Mexico, we have to have a strategic plan. We have to have a rich plan of what we, what we're going to do and so forth. So this handout, and if there's an extra of it, if they're going around. There are simple questions that they ask. First one is, how does, how does Quality to Mexico help our organization reach its goals? How does it help us improve our results? And how does it help us become more competitive? And that's an interesting question, competitive, because we know in the past we've had issues with police department, fire department, where we recruit individuals and then they leave to other organizations. And so that answers that question. What can we do to be more competitive when it comes to our employees and when it comes to serving the community? Now, basically, how does it work? First question is, how is our, how is our, is our, how is our organization doing right now? And how do we know what we're doing? And what, what should we do to improve or change whatever it is in our organization? Are we doing the right thing? Can we do better? And how effective we are? If you look at that little diagram at the bottom, the pie chart, they look, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 areas that they look at. The first one is the leadership. And so we've identified 23 people in the organization that provide leadership. And so the 23 people would include the five commissioners, city manager, administrators, staff and supervisors. So there's a total of 23 leadership positions within city government. The next one is strategy. And that's basically our plan. What is our plan to move forward? And that plan would include everything, all departments, everything. You can fire department, animal services, to planning and zoning, capital outlay, everything. They would include everything. The next one is the customers that we serve that would be our public, citizens of Lovington. The next one is measurement, analysis and knowledge management, workforce, how we operate and results. So what I would like to do is just go through the steps that we would have to take. First thing we need to do if we, if we decide to move forward with this is we have to become a member of Quality to Mexico. And so we're working with Jane Lee, you have to become an official member. Now, once, once you're a member, the next step is to identify the leadership team, which we did. There's 20, 22, 23 of us. Once, once we've identified the leadership, the next step is training. And so what Quality to Mexico will do is they will come here and it's a day, it's either one or two days of training. So we're looking about eight to 16 hours of training. They'll come here, a leadership team will go for the training. And then from there, we'll make that decision, what steps we're going to take next. Once the training is complete, then we have to do our own assessment. Let me do the assessment. And if I'm, I know I'm going a little fast on this, but that's okay. So the first step is level one, our own assessment. We have to submit an assessment to Quality to Mexico. Now, once we submit the assessment to Quality to Mexico, they will look at it. And then from there, we go to the second level. Now, what makes Quality to Mexico valuable, in my opinion, is that they actually come here, they'll send a crew, a peep, they will send evaluators. They'll actually come to the city. They'll actually come to the city and look at, are we doing what we told them we were doing? So whatever we put in our report, they're going to come and say, okay, let's show, show me what you're doing, show me the results. They'll meet with staff, they'll meet with employees, they'll meet with the public. So they actually come in and they evaluate this. So this is an organization where you do not just submit reports, they actually come in and evaluate it, and then they give us feedback. So there's actually five levels. Level one is the Adobe. Level two is the commitment, what is the Peony recognition. Level three is the Road Runner. Level four is the Zia. And then the big one is the Malcolm Aldridge National Polite Award. Now, I know in the county, of one organization that has gone through this process is it's Norley Hospital. And, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're already at the top level. They're, they received the Zia Award grant, correct? And so they're working towards the National Polite Award. And that, they've been through this process for about five, six years.
Uh, no, it's actually taken, uh, we talked, I think they started in 2011.
Okay.
And they were on a really good track. 2020 and 2021 hindered them a little bit, but I believe, it was either the, 2018 is, or 2019, and my memory fails me, is when they received the Zia Award.
Okay.
But it, it was an ongoing process. It took a minimum of eight years, and it may have been more than that, actually, to get to that level. So it gets, we're not going to achieve it overnight, but it is a goal. And when we get to this point, I'll add a little bit here. Anyway, that, you're right. Norley's done, has gone through the process, and I know they are ready to get back on it to get to the Baller's Award.
I strongly believe that this would be a huge benefit for the city of Livingston. I support this program. Like I said, I've been involved with it before, and all it does is make, it makes us better. It allows us to identify our, what is our strength, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, what we need to do to improve, and ultimately, what are we here to do, serve the public? And so I think this is a great program. And like I said, the next step, and I know it's just at this special area, but the next, the critical step is obviously the buy-in from the leadership, the 23 leadership positions that are within the city of Livingston. But I believe that by going through the training, that'll give us all a better understanding of what the program's all about. And so that, I would recommend to the commission and to, to the staff that we, we do this. It would be a huge benefit. Like the mayor mentioned, it's, it's not going to happen overnight, you know? But it's good to get feedback from the outside, that they come in and they. So at this time, I stand for any questions that.
The only thing that I say is that if I could have updated information, because I think that you said this was from 2022, nothing's been updated.
On the website?
On that website.
Okay. I'll give you this handout, this is the criteria that they use. It's a really good.
Other than that, that way there, I can understand, because I don't get some of the things that they did and some of the pricing and that, one of them in 2022. I imagine that's changed.
The mathematics, that is correct.
That's correct, I mean, for the training.
Right.
Mathematics foundation will take more. Training.
Right.
For, for that, the one, two-day training. And it's, I've been doing, it's really good training, but like you said, updating information. They'll actually come in and they'll teach us the criteria. How, this is a criteria, how do we apply it to our organization?
Yeah, I'm all for training. You can't, you cannot ever have enough training. And if it's even an animal of people in the right direction, hopefully it helps everybody get in the right direction.
Right.
But, you know, anything is, as far as training, I'm all for it.
Any other, any other questions?
I would just like to, first of all, follow up in support because of, back in 2000, whatever it was, nine or ten. My, my association with my wife, I got to see their progress. In the first two or three years, you know, you've got to get buy-in. And I'm going to say that this, for the commission and everyone that's here, you have to buy into this. You, this has to be a want, not just another something to add to our repertoire or whatever, because of, first of all, the, we all know Norley Hospital is highly recommend, or recognized as one of the top rural hospitals in the nation. We've been in the top 10 forever. And so to achieve that, even though they were doing a great job or whatever, they really, after the first couple of years of kind of wandering around in the darkness, committed to this. We basically, somebody will have to take total control and be responsible for everyone reporting in. And so it is a commitment, and it's a lot of work. But as they progressed up these levels, I mean, they, the frustrating, I would tell you, there is frustration, because they got to the Road Runner, and probably took about four years to get to that level. And then, then they got the Road Runner again. And I think then they got the Road Runner again, and they're like, okay, man, we're doing everything we can, and yet we can't get to the Zia. And then they realized, when you start, when you are able to turn and look at yourself, and you realize what it takes to get to that next level. And I can give you stories. I have a fabulous story that when they got to the Zia level, I was amazed in a discussion with my wife, where I actually had to pull over to the side of the road as she explained some of the things that they were able to incorporate into their organization and turn items around within a couple of months. And so it is, it is a total mindset. And they, in 2018, and I believe that was the year, that they were actually receiving the Zia. They were, when they got their, the national Baller's Team to come in and get them there now, the gentleman said, we'll see you in Baltimore. I may be wrong about that. But anyway, in March, and so they just thought, oh, man, we've made it, we're going to get it. And they, they get selected, and they realized, it is, it gets to the point that if they go and ask a lady or a person working at the water department, how do you see your job? And I mean, are, there's, there's a whole list of questions in which they ask. And it is that if one person has just a little bit of a negative about whatever, you know? Just been a long day today, or it's been whatever, the things that we do that can keep you from getting there. But the positivity, one of the MBD departments in the state received the Zia Award. And I don't know about you guys, and I'm certainly not picking on our motor vehicle department personnel. I would rather take a beating than go to the motor vehicle department. I mean, it just, it just seems like you're there forever, whatever. But I would love to go to the, the one in the state that received the Zia, because it probably is a pleasurable experience and something that I would hate to be doing. So it is achievable. I mean, it absolutely is, but the buy-in is from everybody is critical, and it's going to be a lot of work. But I support, when the city manager and I talked about this, I was ecstatic, because you talk, you know, since day one, I've been preaching, I don't want to follow anymore, I want to leave. And this is a program that we could show ourselves as leaders of the state. So that's right. Anyway, he has my support, he knows that. I hope everybody else sees the, sees the benefit that we could achieve from this as a community, and it will just help us be a lot better.
Yes.
Thank you, city manager, so much for bringing this to.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, so off to our non-action items. Board is open for motion.
Mayor makes a motion for a resolution 2023 dash 019 approval of grant buyer contract with Lee County Community Improvement Corporation.
We have a motion in second on approval of this resolution, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we received a grant contract from Lee County Community Improvement Corporation, a total of $125,000. This is a two-year contract. Now, the agreement is to, the city would have to pay a portion of this. So we're looking at a salary of $75,000 for the benefits, and that will be a two-year contract. So this person would actually get a contract. It would not be a regular employee, it would be a two-year contract. And once the two years is over, then the contract is over, unless, unless we decide to extend the contract. So a total of $125,000 from Lee County Community Improvement Corporation, and then the city will pay an additional, let me see how much would that be, $25,000 plus benefits. Okay. This is a critical position, and let me just explain some of the work that will, that this person will take on. I'll go, I'll go through the list, and then I'll explain the process, the hiring process. So the first priority for this position, we did spend some time in Santa Fe, Capoeira. And I can, based on what I've heard and what I've seen, I believe we're going to have a really good year for Capoeira. Now, that is all grant money. So whatever we get this year, this person would be responsible for administering the grants, working with the COG, working with the state, to make sure that we spend the money. Because our goal, for example, if we get funding for police vehicles, fire truck, renovation of the police complex, fire police complex, renovation of this building with IT, and so forth. Our goal is, once we get those grant contracts, we want to obligate and spend that money as soon as possible. We don't want to sit on that money. Why is that? We spend the money, then next year we can go back to Santa Fe and request more money. So this person is going to play a critical role to make sure that we allocate and spend the funds. So first one is capital A grants. The next one is going to be the CDVG grant, that's the Community Development Block grant. And so this person would coordinate with the COG, Mr. Dora Batista, and Hubert Cutana, is that how you pronounce his name? And so we will, this person will be in charge of the CDVG, that's a federal grant. And so that'll be a year, two-year process. And so he or she will work with the COG and, and go forward on CDVG. The next, I have a list here. Okay. The next will be the senior center. This person will work with Fay Ferguson and myself, and with the, with the senior committee, and apply for grants for the senior. Right now, I did receive an email from Aging and Long-Term Services Department, and so they're, they, we have the opportunity to submit for Capoeira grants, and that'll close at the end of May. So working with the senior. Also, a conical application for athletic fields, water, wastewater infrastructure improvements, working with Sotter Miller and with Pedigree Associates, associates. Biden Infrastructure Grant, Broadband Phase II Grant, Recreation Trail Grant, state, and the state Recreation Grants. So this position will require a lot of work for this individual. Now, what I would like to do is set up a committee. We will advertise, if approved by the commission, we will advertise the position. And then we will set up a committee. That committee will make recommendations to the city manager. Let's say, for example, three individuals that'll come to me, and then from there, we'll make the decision and we'll hold this position. Any questions or comments? Ricky.
Yes, city manager. Don't, don't, I mean, I, I totally agree with the grant writer and so forth. The thing, the thing that bothers me the most is that, do we have the money to fund these budgets? Because we have to fund the projects up front. Do we also have the matching grant money? That's the biggest thing, before even starting to grant. Do you have all this funding in place before? Because we can write grants all day, but I guarantee you, we have to cut the check, and then we have to wait for that check to come back. Now, do we have the money in the bank to write that million-dollar check and wait on that funding to come back in three months? Or do we have the matching grant money to match that? And how many grants are we going to write within a two-year period? I think we need to consider how much are we going to put into this, because we have to have the money upfront. And everybody always say, oh, remember the grant, we're going to make all the. I'm telling you, it's not as easy as what it plays out, because everybody says, just keep writing. You've got to have the money upfront for the project, you've got to wait on the money to come back. You've got to have the matching funds. And if you don't budget right, if you don't have a plan in place, especially right now, we got a budget here, 60 days, that we got to apply. So in reality, if we're going to do grant writing next year, we've got to reallocate funds for all this grant writing next year, because I guarantee you, you know, you're talking about big projects that cost a million dollars, half a million dollars. I guarantee you, at the end of the day, we won't have nothing to make, because we're going to be pushing for all this. So we're going to have to, I'm just saying, just, just to think about it, is that it may be only two projects, even though you made a big list, you know? It might be only two projects we can afford, maybe two projects after that. So an entire grant writer may be four, but hopefully we look right, you know, other ones, you know, with the, that involve the state, you know? The ones that we don't have to do matching grant.
For example, the Community Development Block.
Yeah, ICIP.
That'd be $75,000.
Yeah, stuff like that, they can do, I, I, you know, but just be careful. You know, I'm just saying, because we could put all this energy into it and then find out, we've got to cut a check, so we don't have money to make it up.
Right.
So it's something I think we need to think about heavily when we start putting a plan together for the next year. But that, for about, we only have six, six days, we got to submit a budget pretty quick. We have to take this all into consideration, just, just think about it. But I, I like that we're having a grant writer, maybe just.
The reimbursements are running a little quicker now, I think.
That's correct.
Still got to cut it, and a lot of times, they say, want X amount down, X amount. You know, these projects just won't happen, they take about six months, two years, just to complete.
Correct, and I know.
You've got to have X amount of money upfront.
I know Crystal Ball's going to present for you. She's going to mention the matching. So, yeah.
But I'm just saying, just to speak out loud, that we just got to make sure that we are all on the same page, considering this, that it's not, it may sound all grand, but I mean, it's, it's really, it's, it's a tough needle. And it is, it's tough to make sense. I think it's, you know, it, it does help. So.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. White? Yes. Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Trigela?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 020 approval to vacate a section of the alley under the 900 block of North Main. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve this resolution. Ms. Ball, you? Of course.
Mayor, Commissioner, so we have the property owners purchased some property on North Main. They want to build a, they're in a dollar, sorry, Dollar General. The, right now, we currently do not use that alley in that area. A lot of it is locked off by the Gandy building that's existing. They did purchase some of that property where the Gandy building is. The fence at the Gandy place will be moving to the north. They are going to leave a utility easement, which would then be through their parking lot for us to have the water line that goes through there. The sewer department said that the sewer line ends before that property. So they will tie into actually the dead end of the sewer line there when they build that building. Did you put in the? Did you put in the, ma'am, do you need to do a look at?
Yes.
So this is basically where we're looking at it being. The line you see right down in the middle is where the existing alley is platted. But like I said, we've, we've never used anything but the southern portion of that alley, which it would still remain.
I'm trying to figure out where we're at.
Mechanics Incorporated.
Pope Avenue, just south of Pope Avenue.
Oh, south of.
Between there and that old beat bar.
So actually, the new coffee shop that's right across the street on the. Do you have any questions that I mean?
I know we've discussed this. Is there any impact on adjoining neighbors? I don't see any, but I just kind of want to open that question. I know you've evaluated it. They, basically, they will, they will own any property that is adjacent or contiguous with it. I didn't see any impact, but would there be any possible?
No, the, because the only access that anyone in the area has is through the south end of the alley. Through the north side, you can't use that alley at all. It's fenced off by that Gandy building. And of course, the Gandy building is the ones that have sold them a portion of their property to actually put all this in. So they don't feel there's an impact on them, and it would not impact people to the south.
Isn't there some mobile homes or something?
Yes, there is one mobile home there on First Street Drive site that just moved in two years ago, three years ago.
I was just curious. I knew there was something that moved in over there.
Yeah, it is, it is.
I actually thought it was further north than where that, how many lines is?
Actually, right behind the old feed store there in the white building.
So on the, the mechanics building, does all their sewer or anything go down that line?
No, they're actually, they tie into the sewer on Pope. That's why the sewer does not go down through the whole alley. The sewer only goes from basically where that old feed store and the new mobile home to the south. This is as far as the sewer line goes.
So you said they're going to add the stub in to the.
No, they'll tie into the sewer line that runs to the south, and they'll tie into the existing water line that does run up to the Gandy building.
Now, are both the sewer line and the water line going to be underneath their parking lot?
So there will be their tie-in for the sewer line to our easement, of course, is theirs. And then, yes, we will have a little bit of sewer line in their parking lot. We have discussed that with them, that basically, if we have to tear it up for any leaks.
They're okay with it.
That's, yeah, that's why they don't want to, I said, you can't put the building over, but you can put a parking lot over. Just keep us the easement and the water company, the water department, the sewer department are all okay.
No issues on that, Senator?
I don't think so. Historically, we've not been able to use that part of the alley. So I don't think it's, it's something that someone has used and been accustomed to, and then all of a sudden it's been called the same. And he's come through this alley, now it's a problem or so. And I think, given the sale of some of that property on the south end, I think if there was an objection of that property owner, we would, they would not participate in that project.
Do you have the, one of the engineers with Pedagogo Associates here, if you have any questions, he's representing the owners.
One quick, quick, so on the far west side, is that, is it just shortened drawing or?
Yeah, it's just shortened the drawing. It was just kind of a quick overlay. They actually, in the supplemental packet, I had some of the.
Because, you know, we have some lots about that size throughout town, so I was just curious if that was, if that was a lot that just was in there or what, so I just, I wanted to make sure before we.
Now, the building will go pretty much back to the back. I mean, they will have room for a little bit of delivery and things like that in the back end, so.
Crystal, on light pollution for the residents that are living right there, do you think they will address that? So there's not too much lighting work, just round them out.
The biggest complaint I get about any residents is we don't have enough light. I don't ever.
I agree with that.
Yeah, complaints.
I disagree with that. The light on Main's, the, the lights shine, shines all the way to my house on H.
But I can, I can.
Yeah, just keep that one by the bungee, like, right there inside the bedroom, you know, that constant light, that light pollution that makes sure that, you know, because that is the parking lot, and that normally they have heavily lights lit up, and it could, you know, it could affect.
I know we're not that far in the design, but when we get to that part, I will make sure that they have very good light, where it does just point directly down, and it doesn't spread outwards. We'll go to that, keep an eye on that.
Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 021 approval of the South Ninth Street Design Project Submission for Fiscal Year 2024 Municipal Arby Artorial, whichever it is, Program, MAP Program, Project Fund Support.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of this resolution. I'm assuming you again.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm looking to submit a grant to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for the MAP program for 2024. This would be to design almost half a mile of Ninth Street from Avenue D to K. So this would, this design would entail replacing sidewalks that are pretty much not existent there on both sides. And it would also include a bike lane, so we can start with all our improvements. The state wants to see the city is moving with this alternative transportation things throughout here.
I'm not brave enough to ride down that section of the street.
So we want to start working on some of these larger arterial streets that do have the room to put in a bike lane. I know, and I like to ride my bike, there's not a lot of places you can be safe doing it. So, but this is just for design, it's not construction. We do have a 25% match. The city has to make that. So do you have any other questions on what this project could be for this thing?
Shannon, roll call, please.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
Mr. White? Yes.
Yes.
Please, Chief, when we, if and when we get to construction, I suggest that we monitor that particular roadway exceptionally well, maybe get a little of the speed down on that particular raceway.
Especially during lunchtime.
Especially during lunchtime, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 022 approval of Mill and Laye Project Submission for Fiscal Year 2024 Cooperative Program and Project Fund Support.
There we have a motion in second for the approval of this resolution. Ms. Ball.
I know, he wanted to mention something right real quick.
Oh, that's something. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, as we move forward with these projects, and Commissioner Trigill mentioned matching funds, so let me just give you a total amount of matching funds. So there's a total of how many projects here, one, two, three, four, five? Five projects with matching funds of approximately $500,000. So what that means is the city would have to come up with $500,000. What we're requesting, the total of, the state would allocate $6.2 million. So we're looking at $6.2 million from the state, but then we would have to come up with $500,000 matching funds. One of my recommendations is to use a low guard EDC fund for that. That would be my recommendation. Because I know low guard EDC, part of that, the language, and I know I worked with Patrick on that, and that might fluff a few feathers in the audience, but if it's, if, if our ordinance states infrastructure, we need to use some money for infrastructure. And so my recommendation is use $500,000. We're sitting on how much, $1.2 million? There's $1.2 million that we're just sitting on, not being used, and that would, I, my recommendation, I want to bring to the mission, is to use $500,000 of that for these rock projects. So with that said, I'll turn it over to you.
And so the next grant we're writing for is to New Mexico DRT. It's called a cooperative program. This program would be to basically rehabilitate some of the streets here in Lovington. This one with the, the funding in this grant is very minimal. Some of my others are, you're going to see a higher amount. But the, my meetings with DOT and everything, in this cooperative grant, the state itself doesn't receive a lot of funding, so they can't give out a whole lot of money. So they said, make this one of your minimal projects that you want to write for. So this just is one road that does need some assistance. It looks bad. It needs some work. And it's Van Buren from the cul-de-sac, just east of Eighth Street, clear over to Thirteenth Street. And it would be to Mill and Inlay and fix that, bring that road back up to its original status. And that's all that's a great for, so. Any questions on that?
Questions? Okay, I have you on. Shannon?
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open for you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 023 approval to submit and support transportation project fund, EBF grant, application for various city street maintenance project number one.
There we have a motion in second for approval of the resolution. Ms. Ball.
Mayor, Commissioners, this grant is through New Mexico DOT also, but it's called our transportation project funds, which in this grant, the state does receive a lot of funding. So they have capped these projects. You can do a, you can submit up to two applications for up to $2 million for any maintenance project. Any maintenance is any time you fix the road back to a better quality without disturbing the curb or the gutter or the sidewalks. So it is just the roadway itself that you're dealing with. So in this grant, I did pick seven streets that are in a lot of need. West Harrison from Sixth to Ninth, Sixth Street from Adams to Jefferson, West Adams from Fifth to Ninth, Avenue, East Avenue C, over here by the Behind the Post Office, from Main to Eddie, and West Avenue I from Second Street all the way to Ninth. We were doing a little portion of I this year with one of the grants we already received, so that's why I is just Second Street, and stood all the way from Main, because we're already doing a little portion of I. So there was also West Van Buren, McColdasat, to East Eighth Street, and then West Avenue J from Main to, I, or Main, Main to Second, sorry. And any questions on that one? This, the TPF grants are all 5% match, so the state pays 9% of the construction cost.
It's nice, right?
Ninety-five.
We don't qualify for the waiver.
No, we did not qualify for the waivers last year. I mean, we can submit again, we always can. But at 5%, that's a $2 million project. We're getting $2 million worth of road upgrades for $98,000.
Questions, Commissioner? Having none, Shannon?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Trigill?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution 2023 dash 024 approval to submit and support transportation project fund, EBF grant, application for various city street maintenance project number two.
There we have a motion second for approval of this resolution. Ms. Ball.
All right, Mayor, Commissioners, this is another TPF maintenance grant, so the same type of grant. You're allowed to write the two requests for this. Don't know, we'll get both of them, but these were seven more streets that were in very bad need of assistance. So we had Third Street from Avenue D to N. We had West Avenue C from Seventh to Ninth, and East Jackson from Main to Eddie, East Monroe from Main to Eddie, McAllister Drive. Everybody know where McAllister Drive is?
You have a clue?
It is that little cutoff right south of Bahar that cuts back over to Erlacher.
Oh, that's the name of it?
That is the name of it. I didn't, I didn't know everybody where that one was. And then we have North Fifth Street from Jefferson to Central, and we have West Avenue F from Ninth to Third. So again, most of these roads I've gone over with the street department. There are some other roads that are in the worst conditions that really need a lot of help, so that's why we've been in for all these.
Towards Eddie Street?
Huh? It's the, the little diagonal one?
No, Eddie Street.
Oh, Eddie Street?
No, not that Eddie, the county street. That guy's name is.
It's spelled McAllister? No, Eddie is, oh, Eddie is spelled wrong.
I didn't see it.
It's E-D-Y, are in the street.
It's like the county.
Commissioner Gandy, I spelled it wrong. I'm making sure I fix those.
Oh, that, oh, okay.
It's not E-D-B.
No.
No. I don't know where that street is, but I know the. Tell Eddie to fix his own, bro. Yeah.
Why?
Why can't you? That's the county for that. It's like county project.
Commissioner Jackson?
Oh, Commissioner Trigill, yes. Yeah, Crystal, so on, on project one and two, well, project one, it would already prove project two. So let's say, for instance, next year, we don't have quite all the funding needed. How long were these, these grants available?
So the TPFs are available for two years. I have two years from the time I'm awarded two of these projects.
Okay. Which ones you have right now?
I do have one, the one TPF project that we're, we've tested all the roadways. The engineering's been done to do. With our roads, you can't do a Mill and Overlake if you don't have enough asphalt on the road to begin with. So we have had to do some engineering on the roads to get them tested, sampled, and then, of course, our contract documents, so we can get a contractor in to do the roads without having a lot of oversight on my end, because I don't have the time for a lot of oversight. So that's a, I'm sending out to the contractor now on the TPF we got last year to do Mill and Overlake, and we should be seeing that work start here in the late spring, early summer.
How many roads?
That was half a mile of roads, and it was five different roads in cap, five different sections of pieces of art here. And as I said, Avenue I from Main to First Street, right by the school pickup there, Leno is one of those. Thirteenth Street from Pope to Jack, Jackson is one of those. Main Street up north of the hospital, from Dum up to Juniper is one of those that's, you know, those are some of the roads that were. And Central from where the county quit the rework when they put in the new building, just, just before you get to Eddie, over to Commercial. So those are the ones that will be done this summer.
Interesting question. And it's not pertaining to any of these there. It's Erlacher, going into Commercial.
Okay.
Who is, whose road is that? Our road?
It is our road.
Okay. Are we going to, because I was seeing a lot of truck driving, and it's beating the crap out of that road. And then they fixed the railroad. That's fantastic.
Yeah.
It's fantastic, but that would be a road that I would love to see before it gets too bad.
Yeah.
Or maybe it already is. I don't know.
Okay, that was one of the grants I had put in for last year that we did not receive, was to design that road, which I can, I had planned to resubmit that, because I already have, we already have a resolution that you guys support that project. So I can resubmit that plan, because Avenue R has also all the drainage issues right there. So we had to have a little bit of a design by an engineer to actually fix that road appropriately, where we wouldn't run into the same problem two years after we fix it. It's right back to where it was.
I, I agree. I just wonder if we were at on that, because.
We didn't get that one, so I am going to resubmit that since here.
Bad shape.
Yes.
Any further questions? Having none? Shannon, roll call, please, please.
Commissioner Bowe? Commissioner, Commissioner Treheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Y?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2023 dash zero two five, Approval to Submit and Support Transportation Project Fund, EBF Grant. Application for construction of West Jackson Avenue.
Shannon, we have a motion saying the approval of this resolution, discussion is lost.
Okay, so this project, we wrote a MAP grant for last year. And we are at 90% completion for the designs for that grant that we received. So we are writing for a TPF capital project. The capital projects through the state are allowed to, they will award up to $4 million. We don't need that much to redo this road, it is to redo West Jackson from Ninth to Seventeenth. From Ninth to Thirteenth, that road is very narrow, not many sidewalks still exist. So what that is, is we do actually have the right away to make it the same width it is on from Thirteenth to Seventeenth. Where we have a nice wide road and we have the sidewalks. So that's what we're going to construct, because we got the design, so we want to put in to construct that.
And we informed our citizens from Ninth Street to Thirteenth Street.
That is something that I will do if we get the award.
Absolutely, I agree.
We got to be awarded, but then, yes, they would all receive letters of what is going on. They have seen surveyors in the area, I've had a couple of calls on it and a lot, but because the surveyors have been out there making marks and looking where everything's at. We've talked to Lee County Electric, there will be some removal and replacement of some of the telephone poles and electric poles and things like that in that area. We've got all the costs in the contract and the grant we're asking for. And again, this is another 5% match.
I know I'm gonna get a few calls.
You would be though. Yeah, because some of those carports and fences are in our rights.
We know. Well, they're gonna be like, you're taking my property, and no, we're not, but doesn't matter. All right, any further discussion or questions? Shannon Rokeville, please.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Y?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like someone else to make a motion, the financial report. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, the financial report.
Okay, we have a motion in second consideration of the financial report. Any, what else? You've got some info.
We can zoom into the financial statement and the GRT.
There it is, go.
GRT. I need my hands, I'm so quick to continue. Sorry. I did change the revenues.
Chairman Jackson, thank you for coming in tonight.
I did change the revenues, I did the total revenues and then I added the gross receipts in as well. Like you said last time, it wasn't happy, so I'm going to recurr. It gives you kind of an idea of what's given to you. And our, our GRT stand pretty strong. As you can see on the GRT sheet, it stands pretty strong.
Trace the 938,000 prospect, is that for what month?
December.
Is that December?
No, not the 938, that, that was February.
That was given trace in February, but it was for December.
For December, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Our GRT is good.
So the 938 was for December.
Oh, that's sixty days behind my heart?
Just six years.
It's, we get it in February and it was for December and they.
So I was, I was always under the impression it was ninety days behind, not sixty days behind.
Any further questions for our financial report?
It's nice to see we've already surpassed the last five years. Just what we got this fall.
Exactly.
Pretty much just one of them is pretty close. Pretty much.
It's a little too. Wait, stay that way.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
A third of the year left and.
Already.
Bring this kickback for four months, is that right? Sure. There you go, that's right. We're gonna have, we've passed any of those, so I guess I agree.
Now they're saying March, now they're saying March.
I just thought it's something to the bills about.
Also, we have that on the engine, we should receive that.
And your annual is till two now?
Real slow, two years of. That's two years.
They just took our money and ran it.
I'll probably retire before we get that. It's like seven years, ten years. I mean, you know, this is, you, like, they're getting that, he's here, like. That's.
Any further discussion on the questions on the financial report? If not, Shannon, Rokeville, please.
Commissioner Y?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Treheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
That exhausts the action items.
Mayor, I'd like to go and conclude questions pursuant to Section 10 dash 15 dash one. NMSA 1978 subsection H2 regarding limited personnel, matters city, matters.
We have a motion saying to one of both sessions. Thank you for coming tonight. Shannon, Rokeville, please.
Commissioner Treheal?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Y?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Do we need a slight break, or is everybody okay? Oh, okay.
Probably outside if you need.
Yes, and Shannon, you're gonna stay in here, right?
Shannon?
Take, take your time, take your time, absolutely.
Better, yeah.